Please second that.
Second.
Thank you. Or motion, I'm sorry. Motion and seconded.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. The motion is seconded to authorize the Secretary of the Board, the School Director, Mr. Lego, to use the facsimile signature of Jim Matarazzo, newly elected President of the Board of School Directors, and to further authorize the Secretary to file the required document with the Department of Education.
Question.
Question's being called. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Good. All right. Now, appoint the district's Legislative Council Representative and alternate. May I have a motion to appoint Mr. Matarazzo as the district's Legislative Council Representative and Mrs. Toni Issing as the alternate representative?
So moved.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. To appoint Mr. Matarazzo as district's Legislative Council Representative, Mrs. Toni Issing as the alternate representative.
Question.
Questions being asked? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Ah, this adjourns the organizational meeting. I have to have a motion for that too, I guess.
Motion.
Motion to close this part of the meeting. And seconded. Organizational meeting will be adjourned at approximately 7:15 PM. Motion carried? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That part is done. All right, opening items, call to order. And do we need to go back to roll call? Everything, okay? Regular board meeting right now, so here we go, guys. Will the Secretary please do the roll call?
Yes, Mr. President. Mrs. Issing. Mr. Kachasek.
Here.
Dr. Koscho.
Here.
Mr. Bill Leonard. Mr. Dallas Leonard is absent. Mr. Matarazzo.
Here.
Mr. Nemec.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
You have a call, Mr. President.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And now up for information by Dr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Matarazzo. First of all, we're gonna, we have some visitors to come in and we kind of, Mr. Matarazzo explained at the beginning of the meeting that we are under some restrictions for the boardroom. We used to be able to have 25 people, but now we're down to actually having 15. So our guests are actually coming in one by one at this time. So we're gonna bring in the winners of the field hockey team, as you know, Coach Sidney Dutt and two of her players. Sidney, welcome.
Excuse me, would it be better to have that in the middle? Someone said they able to see. Can we see her video-wise?
You know what, I was gonna actually bring them up front.
Oh, that's better.
Sidney, are you able to come up front? Because I told him, Mr. Vincent, he's actually working remote.
But I thought you had to be in the middle.
If he can actually come up and can actually take my chair.
Great.
And sanitized, it's all good. Here? Hello. Thank you very much for having us here and inviting us to come. I wanted to thank you for your support for all of the fall sports this year. It was so therapeutic for all those kids to be out there and it made a difference in everything, their health, their well-being, and how they were able to approach school. So thank you very much for all the sports. Thank you especially for your support for field hockey through the program that we've had for the many years you were, that we've been here, and some of you were here when we pitched it back in the beginning. We have grown in numbers and success over the years. We started with like 15 players and we had 40 this year. I remember when we won our first game, I remember achieving a 50-50 record, and this year we were the first, was the first time we ever achieved an undefeated season record. And we're very proud of that. This was also our fifth consecutive Whipple championship, and with six total over the course of the years, one second place. And we had our best showing in the state playoff game, which was exceptional. I mean, most of the time, teams from the East really hammer us, but this year, we've really picked up our game and the girls played beautifully.
Was it three to one?
It was three to one. Mm-hmm. Actually, and Shady Side moved on, so we did have a team that went forward. None of this was possible without the commitment of the players, the coaches, the trainers, the athletic staff, and Mr. Hetrick, and as well as the community here. I can't understate how cooperative our players were each and every time we were together. We pledged to do everything we could to make sure they had an opportunity to play in this Whipple championship, especially our seniors, because we had 11 seniors that were returning this year. Hard work, commitment, mutual respect, friendship, and love of sport got us here, as well as the leadership of our team captains, two of which are here tonight, and I'm gonna bring them in so our numbers are right. Allison Duran and Julia Moorhead are two of the captains that are representing the team today. Not in attendance is Emma Little, she couldn't be here. But if it weren't for these two captains, as well as Emma, taking the time to help coordinate the temperature checks, reminding the girls to fill out their COVID forms, rallying the troops when things were a little stressful, because it's been a stressful school year. And the happy place that we have is when we're on the field. And I can't tell you how important that was. So I just want to thank you again for your continued support for this sport, and it has kept us sane and healthy and hopeful during this difficult time. So I will take a moment to pass this off and invite Julia and Allison come in, because I think I have to leave for the numbers, right?
You're okay.
Okay?
Board member after.
Okay. So do you want to come in, ladies? You have to go to the front. There you go.
Okay, well, we don't have that much to say, because Coach Dutt basically said everything that we really wanted to, but just to reiterate what she said, just thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to play this season, and it like meant a lot for us, because we weren't sure if we were gonna get to play our senior season, and we were able to do it and keep going with our fifth Whipple title, so thank you guys so much.
Who's who up there?
I'm Julia, sorry. And that's Ally.
Are you planning on playing field hockey in college?
Uh, yeah, at Mercyhurst, yeah.
Mercyhurst, you, I can hear you, watch that. Congratulations.
I'm not, no, I don't, I'm...
You've had enough.
Yeah. No, I've had it, not that, but I...
And what position did you play?
I'm forward.
And I was a midfielder.
Tell me, ask this, what did you do? Some people are concerned about winter sports, about COVID, et cetera. Before you practice, how did you make sure these girls were safe?
Well, we, we, um...
Hey, people, parents should know what happens in sports.
Yeah, well, we kept our distance. We were very careful, they were masked at all times when they shouldn't have, when they were waiting to go on the field. We really never spent any time indoors, like all of our equipment and everything was outside, even in the rain, just because we knew that indoors was a little bit more of a risky situation. Bathroom trips were one at a time. You could go into the bathroom one at a time, and we never, we just never congregated in there for any length of time. Fair occasions, we were indoors and they were masked, and most of the time, it's kind of time that we didn't have an emergency test.
Were they doing temperature checks as well?
Oh, yes.
I thought so.
Temperature checks, that's what these guys got started if I couldn't get there on time. Oh, yeah, I have, well, all the records are part of the school now, I have, I know what everyone's general body temperature is.
I want to thank you for your stability. How many years have you been doing this now?
Here?
Yes.
I think we started in 2002, so I started the program, but I didn't coach the first two years, I was in teaching school, and I was coaching at the YWCA, so I've been here since 2005.
Well, you've established an amazing program. And to see it grow, that's great. Any other board member want to say anything?
Just to, congratulations, you're making the school district and the area proud to accomplish what you have is really amazing, and such a short amount of time. You guys are actually the program to beat now.
That's right.
Thank you. I'm proud of them, and if it works for their commitment, it, you know, it's just pure joy to be on the field, they worked really hard and...
That's reflected. And also, what I think's neat is this community, when I walk the halls around here, Mrs. Issing and our hall walkers, I see your pictures all the time on the walls.
That's actually our underclassmen, always, these two girls always, every year, well, every year that we won the Whipple, but so for us, that's been every year. But, um, they always put those on our lockers, and, yeah, they're really nice, they spend a lot of time working on them, so...
Nice touch.
Yeah.
Good luck at college.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That you're going to Mercyhurst?
Um, I don't know, I'm likely to do plane, I think, is my thought. They don't even have a field hockey team, so...
Thank you again for being...
Thanks for coming out. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you so much.
Great work.
Congrats.
And then next, we also have Nurse Lisa Popovich, she's gonna work with Mr. Glaze and myself whenever the health and safety plan, some of the changes that we made and came up with during the last couple of weeks. I know Lisa's actually in our office right now, because...
No, she's right here.
Oh, she's not there?
Yeah.
She is. She says she's gonna work as a lot of extra time as she could. So Lisa, thank you for coming in.
We're gonna be right now?
Yeah. We've been sending him a lot of information the last couple of weeks with different changes and the different forms we had to sign, so we kinda want to go over everything with the public.
Please, can you do that light a little bit?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I think you can sit down.
14-10.
That's lovely. Thanks.
Okay. The, as most of you know, there's been some changes with the state and the orders that have come down, and what has happened is we have what's called an attestation form that we had to fill out to give the district guidance as to what we would do instructionally. We had basically two choices. We had option one, which I have up there, and we had option two. Option two is to go full remote instruction. I think everybody knows, we did not choose that option, we are not doing full remote instruction right now. What we are doing right now is a, we are following the state mandates and the orders for opening schools. So one of the orders we have to do is follow all the guidelines of the face coverings, and so that follows all the issues with mandates in terms of wearing face covering. So basically, the kids gotta wear face coverings all day long, except for a couple of exceptions. Okay, the second issue here, here is the recommendations for following schools, following identification of cases. I'm gonna jump to the tracker right now, and I'm gonna have Mrs. Popovich talk about this a little bit. This tracker is gonna tie into the option one, and I'm gonna show you how that ties in in a second, so if you could just tell us exactly what the tracker means, what's an active case, what is the 14-day average, and how that falls in, and then we'll segue into the attestation option one.
So as you can see on the screen, and first, thank you very much, I cannot thank you all enough for your support of everything we're doing to try and keep everyone safe at Penn Trafford. Mr. Glaze, Dr. Harris, we've worked very hard, and I can't thank Michelle Stukas, Amy Markelinski, and Laurie Donatelli for all their support with me to make sure everything's happening. In the COVID tracker, Colleen Kelly created this beautiful COVID tracker, and we keep the information on here. We list, it's up here, it says about the 14-day period. 14-day period begins when our very first positive, we start on their symptom date. That explains, that gives us the date that their symptoms begin, and from that, that's their day zero, that's our first day on the tracker. And then we go for a period of 14 days keeping people on that tracker, so that's the period of time, from our first 14, our first positive through that 14 days, and then they come off and it's rolling. So as we have positives, those active cases go on our tracker and then off. Once we close, because of, we closed for this past week, we go to a zero, because we've actually closed. Now, because it was district-wide, it took everybody to a zero. We only had two students who would have still been on, that were at the elementary school and Trafford Middle School, but they came off also. So at this point, we have no active cases at all in the district. Those are the active cases, again, that would be on the 14 days. This is the students, these are the staff. The inactive cases are the number of students that we have had, students and staff that are positive, that have rolled off and are no longer current in their 14-day rolling period. So as you can see, we've had a total of 77 cases in the district. Now, during this time, these ones are all ones that were physically in the schools during the time that they were positive. We do not have to list students or staff that were not physically in the school during their infectious period or their active period of being positive for COVID. So someone who, perfect example, over Thanksgiving, we left school on the 25th, on December 2nd, they started to have symptoms, went for testing, was positive. That may be somebody who's positive in our school district, but they were not in the school during their infectious stage, which is 48 hours prior to their symptoms developing or after. So that's why, like right now, we've had a number of people that we've gotten reports that since the Thanksgiving begin of break have developed symptoms, have tested positive, and are now in quarantine. But we don't have to list them on our tracker.
Yeah, and just to clarify, so as we know, we did not have school this past week, and that was, that really helped us out, because, think about it, we were, our last day of school was last Wednesday, then Thanksgiving was that Thursday, and it was what, I think 11 days before we had to come back to school, so technically, we were closed for a whole week and then some, which was, which enabled us to reset the tracker back to zero, but really, the real benefit of that is it gave us an opportunity for kids, for parents to quarantine, for kids to quarantine, for symptoms to develop, and they were not in the building spreading the COVID to their classmates, to teachers, to staff, they were able to stay at home. So we didn't have to put them on our tracker and count them as active cases, so, and a lot of them are starting to come back to school this week, or they're back already. So that was the benefit of what we did over Thanksgiving, and we did have some discussions with the board administration, and, you know, there's some thought about doing the same thing, we'll see where it goes, in January, when we come back from Christmas holiday, doing the same thing for that week, to get caught up in all the cases and make sure the quarantine is able to happen, to make sure we're monitoring the cases, so that's something that we're discussing for January as well.
So that's what our tracker is. So do you want me to discuss what has happened with the changes in the quarantine?
Yeah, the quarantine, well, that's on the next one of the slides, so we'll get to that in a minute. But the tracker, just so you know, Lisa maintains this tracker, you know, Dr. Harris, myself, I don't make changes to it every day, Dr. Harris doesn't make changes to it, Lisa really is the lead person, and she's been outstanding in this whole process, she really has lived and breathed this, she spends a lot of time in it, we're very grateful for having her on our staff. But she talks to the Department of Health almost daily, she talks to parents, she talks to staff, and tracks them, she has spreadsheets that she's constantly looking at, putting kids on it, removing them, putting staff on it, removing them, monitoring how many days, and looking backwards, so this is totally monitored by her. We are really hands-off. Obviously, we have access to it, we watch it every day, we keep track of it, but Lisa maintains it every day for accuracy, and it's very important, okay?
Yes, truly, I, we know there are people who question, you know, are they putting people on? I promise you, there is no way that I would allow things to not be correct on, in what we have to report, especially to our Department of Health and to our families. This, I do, I take full responsibility for this, because I want to make sure it's absolutely perfect for what we're supposed to be doing, for the safety of our students and our staff here at Penn Trafford. So please, please know that.
Yeah, anything, any questions on the tracker? Because that's something that I know a lot of parents, a lot of staff, board members, people look at this daily to see where we're at. Any questions or concerns about the tracker, Mr. Matarazzo?
Can you explain, how do we find out if someone has COVID? They're not in school, how are we finding this out? Do we send the detectives out?
Well, that's a good, that's a good, yeah, and honestly, there's a lot of this, is the honor system, guys, you know, we really rely on parents, we rely on staff to report it, self-report it, because the Department of Health is so backed up and so backlogged, we do not get daily phone calls and reports from them to say, okay, we have a positive test here or there. We are basically doing this on our own. Now, don't get me wrong, Lisa talks to the DOH, we have a great contact there that helps us out daily on it, but there, she's a liaison between the school and the Department of Health, and we work together on it, but they, all the legwork is done by us, contact tracing primarily is done by us, we report the information to them, and they advise us how to handle it and what to do, whether or not to close schools, whether or not somebody should be quarantined, or whether or not they're okay, social distancing, was that in effect, was it not that they have masks on, all those things are looked at, right?
Yes. Our contact at the Department of Health is Dennis Minix, and he is wonderful with guiding us. We give him the information, and then he turns around and gives us the directive of what he thinks we should do. Especially when, we do get an occasional phone call from a Department of Health person for contact tracing, when this happens out in the community and they know it's one of our students. They contact us, in fact, they've called Dr. Harris a couple times and then sent it to me, because they're identified in an activity outside in the community, and then they let us know. The majority of the time, we have already been notified by the parent, or sometimes the student has emailed the teacher to let them know that they're going to be out, and then the teacher forwards it to us to let us know, and then we follow up by calling the parent. So that's how the majority of the times that we're notified. We do follow HIPAA, the Health Information Privacy Act. We do not, if somebody calls and says, oh, my neighbor has, is COVID-positive, we can't go by that. We have to wait until we are either notified by the person or we are notified by the Department of Health. We cannot just take somebody's random word and then go tell, you know, it's not a, that kind of situation, because a privacy act is very, very important.
And we also realize, I think everybody realizes, there are a number of people out there, whether it be parents or others, who just aren't reporting this to us, and we know that, but there's not a whole lot we can do with that, you know, if we find out somebody may be symptomatic or there's an issue, we can certainly make a call, but it's not our job to go out in the community and investigate people, you know, in their homes. And honestly, what is happening for the most part, I mean, people are living by the quarantine rules, so maybe they aren't reporting it to us, but at least they are quarantining themselves and their children in their homes, and they're just not telling us maybe, and typically, we just know that the kid hasn't showed up for two weeks, and I think we pretty much know why. But we understand that it's not being reported all the time, but we can only deal with the cases that are reported to us, okay?
As far as reporting, we had a slide, you don't have to go to her now, but it was up there, because we just wanted to remind people, at any time, you can report it, and I know Lisa gets the bottom of it, but she actually does it on the weekend, does it in the evenings, because the sooner she knows, the sooner we can actually notify anyone who is a close contact, and they can start quarantining and making everyone aware. I know sometimes people would like to wait till Monday morning, how many, she received numerous today contacts, but if you can do it all along, and even over Thanksgiving, I put that out there, please contact her at any time with her email, popovichl@penntrafford.org, because the sooner she notices, we can start to process quicker.
Yeah, truly, if we find out that someone is positive and they identify their close contacts and we talk to the Department of Health, it is so much faster getting people into quarantine, so they are not out in the community or in places that they're exposing other people to the virus.
So let's go backwards a little bit.
What's that?
I know you're doing so much. There's some other people you might want to mention that are helping you make the phone calls and...
And I did, I did mention that at the very beginning, Michelle Stukas is my right arm, I mean, she has been wonderful in doing that, and also our other two certified school nurses, who are Amy Markelinski and Laurie Donatelli, and all of our building nurses.
Yep. So going back to this attestation form, remember, we agreed to, Dr. Harris and Mrs. Issing, as the board president, had to swear their lives away and sign a form that said they would adhere to all the face covering regulations, but they also signed a form, and we had to submit to the state saying that they will follow all the recommendations for following the school protocol for closing schools. So I'm gonna show you that here. So, right there, you see the building size in yellow. If we have an elementary building that has less than 500 kids, and that's basically all of our elementary schools in Trafford Middle, as soon as you get two positive cases in that building, you're required to close for three to seven days. There's no ifs, ands, or buts, no wiggle room, we are required to close three to seven days, and we will do that, okay? We will do that. Now, in that same building, in a small building, such as the elementaries and Trafford Middle School, if we go up to five cases, now we're required to close for 14 days, 14 days, okay? And there's no wiggle room, except, you see an asterisk there. It does say way at the bottom, if case investigations, contact tracing, cleaning, and disinfecting can be accomplished in a faster timeframe, the length of closure may be shortened. So the closing range for two cases is three to seven, so instead of seven, they say you could bring it down to three if your contact tracing, your cleaning, and your investigations permit you to do so. But that's also with consultation with the Department of Health, we have to come to an agreement on that and say three's acceptable, you know, maybe we better do five. So that's up to us to determine, along with the Department of Health, determine how many days we should close, but the range is three to seven if you have two cases, okay? Makes sense? Now go to the middle one, which is green, we only have one school that has students between 500 and 900 kids, that's Penn Middle School. So as soon as Penn Middle School would have four positive cases, that means they would be required to shut down for three to seven days, three to seven days. Now, if they have seven cases, they would go to the 14 threshold, okay? And now, somebody's probably saying, well, what's your enrollment? Does that count for remote learners, the kids? It's anybody who is enrolled in those schools, whether a remote learner, hybrid, in-school, out-of-school, so it's your total enrollment that you have in those buildings, regardless if they're remote or not, okay? Then the last category is the high school, which is 900-plus, we only have one building that has 900-plus, as soon as they get to six kids, then we'd have to close from three to seven days. Six positive cases, three to seven days. And now, at the other end of it, if we have 11, once you get to 11, you're required to close for 14 days, okay? So what we've agreed to as a district, Dr. Harris and Mrs. Issing, she signed their lives away, they said we will follow this edict, and we will, so we are required to follow that. And the alternative is if we don't follow it, we have to go to full remote instruction, okay, which is option two. And we can go to option two later if we want to, if we want to, you know, reverse our decision to go full remote instruction, we'll go to option two, but we're choosing to go option one for now, okay?
And remember, the numbers might have been different for the beginning of the year, but they always gave us guidance, and they always closed, we closed, this year, we closed Level Green when they told us to, Sunrise, Harrison Park, and Penn Middle, so we have been, taken the recommendations with the closing, there's all came as recommendations from the Department of Health based on the numbers. So pretty much, we have been following a process very similar. The numbers have changed on this chart, though, in some cases.
Yeah, just to clarify what Dr. Harris said, you know, remember we closed the very beginning, the first building to close was Level Green, and the second one was Sunrise. And in those two buildings, just to make sure you understand, we had cases, and they were, they were staff issues, they weren't student issues, as we know, this virus tends to affect older people more than the younger kids. In those two buildings, elementary buildings, we had a staff infections, and we were pretty confident, we were very confident, that the infections were happening from one staff member to one staff member to staff member, so that was a in-school transmission, we knew we had an outbreak in those buildings, okay? So really made sense to close Level Green and Sunrise, okay? So that's what we did. Now, the other buildings, we've had cases in the middle schools, we had cases at the high school, even Harrison Park and McCullough, but in those buildings, with the exception of one case in the high school, there wasn't any transmission from student to student or student to staff, as far as we know, from what we looked at, okay? We can't prove any kind of connection between a student-to-student transmission and a student-to-staff transmission. What we have determined, when we looked into them, they happened in a community, maybe they're Cub Scouts, or maybe it's out at some sporting event that's unrelated to the school, or maybe it's at a party, a birthday party, or a family gathering, those are where the community, the transmissions are typically happening, they're typically not happening in the schools. Am I right?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Did you say we, I mean, we had...
We had, we had one at the high school that we believe was student to student.
Penn Middle School.
I'm sorry, that was, Penn Middle, I apologize, Penn Middle School, Penn Middle School. Yeah, I misspoke, sorry. Okay, is that pretty accurate? Okay, so there's a tracker, we went over the attestation, that's attestation number two, and I explained that, it's simple, you go to full remote instruction if you don't want to live by that chart that I just showed you, okay? And we decided not to do that, but that's something we can certainly entertain at a later date if we want to go that route. The quarantine guidelines, Lisa, do you want to talk about the new quarantine guidelines? They just changed, so it's important that everybody understand them.
So on Friday afternoon, Dr. Levine released a report that came out from the Pennsylvania Department of Health. I'm sure you had all heard about how the CDC had changed the close contact quarantine dates that allowed them to, you had a close contact and they had to quarantine for 14 days and you could not get out of that quarantine with a negative test result. Well, a lot of people were not following the 14-day quarantine time. So the CDC decided to drop the time down to 10 or seven. We had to wait until the Pennsylvania Department of Health adopted the guidance and they actually, they did change it a little bit from what the CDC recommended. So the first thing is they took the 14 days down to 10. Now, it is totally recommended. The best quarantine time is 14 days and they do recommend that. But the alternative is to do 10 days without a test. That means if you were exposed to someone who is COVID positive, you had that exposure and then you were able to be away from them. You were able to quarantine away from them, it was like a non-family member. So if you came in exposure to them on December 1st, then on December, that's your day zero. On December 2nd is the day you start your quarantine, your 10-day quarantine. So you would quarantine for 10 days and then be able to be free after that 10 days of quarantine is completed. The alternative is to that is seven days with a negative test, which allows you to quarantine from day one. You could quarantine and on day five of your quarantine, you could go be tested. Now, a rapid test, we personally have had nine rapid tests that have been negative, but the lab result came back positive. So we prefer to be a lab result test because we've had so many false reports. So with that, the seven days, so on day five, you could go get tested. If you get your results back on day seven, on day eight, you can be released from that with a negative test result. If not, if you can't, then you would just do the 10 days. But again, that is if you're symptom-free after 10 days. They still recommend that you still, up to day 14, that you still continue to monitor your symptoms every day. You wear your mask, you socially distance. So these are all things that they have given as an option. But of course, they still recommend that the 14 days is the best. So those are the things that they've changed. Now, the travel quarantine, it still applies to everyone who travels out of the state for a period of, there's a different, there's a whole bunch of different rules, meaning restrictions that if you're going to college, say you're going to a WVU to pick up your son from college and you're going down, you're coming right back, you do not have to get tested because you're going in and out of that. If you're going for a medical test, say you're taking your son to Ohio for a surgery, you do not have to do that because there's reasons you're going and coming back. But the travel rules, the biggest thing that changed within, from November 17th to November 25th, is they added travelers over the age, that travelers under the age of 11 do not have to be tested. So those are our elementary kids. They do not have to be tested when they come back into the Commonwealth. So anyone over the age of 11 has to be tested. So those are the things that have changed. Now, household contacts, that is one of the biggest things people ask all the time. If you are a household contact, say you're a mom, you're positive and you say, "Well, what do my kids have to do?" If you can totally quarantine away from your kids, that is wonderful. You use your own bathroom, you stay away, you eat separately because then they can become a close contact, which means they can do the 10 days and not the full time. If you are unable to quarantine away from them, meaning they're going to be exposed to you over and over, you have to wait until your 10 days of your quarantine finishes. On day 11, your day 11 is when they start their first day of quarantine. Because the Pennsylvania Department of Health, we believe that you are shedding the virus during those 10 days. That is why then they start their quarantine on your day 11, their first day. Now, they can do the 10 days or they can even try with the seven days with a negative test. The problem we're going to have with the negative test is there are so many people out there in the community who are being tested for the virus. They are going to put them as a priority over someone who's trying to get out of a quarantine. So that is one of the things that the Department of Health has said. You can try this, but you may not be able to get it because there are so many people being tested. Anyone have any questions?
Any questions on the quarantine?
Well, a lot of places are now not doing rapid testing. They have dropped the rapid testing altogether because there has been so many false positives and false negatives in the rapid. Yes, yes, usually, I mean, in some cases, we see the lab results come back in two days. And just recently, we had people who were tested on December 1st and we just got their lab results yesterday. So it really depends on where you go. If you're going in Allegheny County, you're going to see a longer test result. If you go in some places in Westmoreland County, the times are lower because there's not as many people being tested here as there. Thank you.
You know, just I want to clarify one more thing about an active case. Just to make sure everybody understands, an active case that counts against the school is an individual who is infectious or contagious while they're in the building, all right?
Correct.
Or, and it does not include, just to be clear, remote learners, okay? So remote learners don't get counted into that, just active, just students or staff who are infectious or contagious while they were in the building. And fortunately, many of these, oftentimes what happens is a parent is positive and now their child's quarantined and then on day two, three, or four of the parent's quarantine, the child becomes positive, but the child was never in our building, which is a good thing. So it doesn't hurt us and the kid has never been in the school. So there was no spread in the school, so we don't have to put it on the tracker, okay? Just to clarify that.
What we'll see going forward is now that we had our time, that the people were out, like a student who came here today, they were here physically in the building. Maybe Wednesday, they start to exhibit symptoms. Well, their infectious period is considered 48 hours prior to their symptoms developing. So we would look at where they were Monday, Tuesday, up until their symptoms starting Wednesday. And that's how we would determine. If they were then to go get tested and be positive, that's when we would do our contact tracing all the way back to Monday. And if they were positive, that would be one of our students that we would consider positive against our tracker.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? I think that's all that we have.
So all those numbers are total human beings in a building, correct? Not just...
The enrollment?
Yes.
Your enrollment is based on what is on our rolls. How many kids are enrolled in the high school? So actually, in the high school, I think there's 1,308 maybe right now. So that's what it's based on, not the hybrid, not half of that, or not excluding the remote learners. It's based on the total enrollment of the building, which is 1,308 right now.
All right, Scott, students only or students and staff together?
Students.
Students only?
Student enrollment.
Student enrollment.
Student enrollment. It's a good question though.
As we discussed earlier with taking that week after Thanksgiving, Lisa, did you want to discuss your thoughts about after Christmas as well?
Oh, well, we, I will tell you and I thank you so much for allowing us to have this past week off because it really did, seeing our numbers of all of our parents who are positive and the kids who have become close contacts who have also become positive, that last week really saved us because those kids, had we come back to school on the first, on the first and second, third, fourth, those kids would not have known at that point that their parents were positive. And they would have been in school and they wouldn't have known that they had been exposed. And then because of the positives that then we got from them, they would have been that infectious period that they had, what I just explained, they would have been that Monday, Tuesday, or that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we would have been, we would have already had the schools closed down.
Yeah, and I think I can speak for the board in saying, some of the reason why we chose option one, which was to come back to school, is when I mentioned it a little bit before, we talked about the transmission rate within the schools. And as I said, the transmission rate from student to student is very, very minimal. One case that we know of, there were staff-to-staff cases about a month or so ago, but we really haven't had any of those either. So, you know, what we have found is the schools are a very safe place to be because of all of the regulations that we have in place. You know, we try to keep the kids apart as much as possible, the masks, the social distancing. And, you know, even, we've even heard from the CDC and Dr. Fauci, who've said, "Schools are very safe to be in school" and they recommend that kids are in school. So we've kind of taken that lead and gone in that direction. But that's not to say that things can go south real quick and we have to close next week or, you know, the week after that. And we'll do that if we need to, we will do that. But right now, we're seeing very, very low transmissions in the schools. So that's why we have taken the course we have. Board, if I'm wrong, please correct me.
Your recommendation, Lisa, is to come back in person on the 11th of January?
Yes, it's similar to what we experienced this past week. I, we know what's going on now. The vaccine will be started in our community by that time. We've already seen it starting in the hospitals. So hopefully, as the hospitals and personnel and people, because we have a lot of parents out in the community who are, work in the hospitals. So they will start getting the vaccine. So it'll start, you know, start trickling down, hopefully, that people will start to have it. But I truly believe during that Christmas week, that break that we're off, people are going to be out gathering. It's not going to stop them from being with family and friends. So I really, really believe it'll help us with our numbers. As Mr. Engle said, if we get the positives, we're closing. We're going to follow what Dr. Harris and Mrs. Ising signed. We are not going to go against that. If we get the positives, if the numbers tell us to close, we're closing. But we hope that we can give the kids who want to be here in school and need to be here in school the opportunity to be here. I thank you because I see it, especially with the kids who struggle with remote learning, also the kids who have food issues and need to be here. So I really want to do our best to give them that opportunity. If parents don't want to be here and they don't feel safe, their kids can be remote. But for those kids who want to be here and do well with in-person education, we want to give them that opportunity. So thank you.
Well, Dr. Harris, knowing that this is our only meeting for the month, would it be prudent then, if that's a decision the board would like to do, to make sure we give enough advanced notice to parents?
I agree with you.
And make that decision tonight? I don't know what the procedure is, you know? Do we have to pull the board or...
I don't, I'm not sure that that requires board authorization, but we could certainly do that. Ms. Lane, do you know?
Well, maybe not authorization, but comment from other board members. Right, Bill.
Right.
Mrs. Popovich?
Yes.
Are the vaccines proven? Are they, because they all come on a rush right in time. Are they all proven, you know of, or...
There, the, a few of them that have been, they've been put out there through emergency, they have been very, very successful.
Okay.
So I'm, I know that a number of them have been brought into the health systems, so...
They came on so fast, I just had a question, that's all.
Of course, you know, time will tell. But I'm hoping and praying that we see some results because we do have people in our PT world whose parents have passed recently due to COVID and we just don't want that to continue to happen.
We've actually had two, yeah, two staff members.
So Dr. Harris, our solicitor has said that, you know, administration has the authority to make adjustments to the calendar. So if you want to make that adjustment for the week following Christmas to go full remote, we can do that.
We can do that at that time.
So that's something we want to send out in a letter here this week.
Parents appreciate as much a notice as possible.
Right.
I do want to share, I know Lisa was talking about how many kids are, you have the opportunity to go for remotes. Currently, right now, at the elementary schools, Trafford Elementary has 35% of their kids remote, Level Green 21, Sunrise 22, McCullough 23, and Harrison Park 30%. At the middle schools, Trafford has 34% and Penn Middle has 44%. With the high school, they do the hybrid, so there's usually less than 40% in the building. And some families are just choosing to go until sort of now, until after the New Year as well.
We have one last thing to say here regarding, while we have Lisa, we want to give her some more plugs here. The Stuff a Truck Toy Drive. So if you don't know, she is our school nurse, but she also runs our community action program, which is a very active and charitable organization with the kids and Ms. Popovich, community outreach, and they do a lot of good things for the community. And they work with the Penn Township Police Department on the toy drive. So Lisa, do you want to talk about that for a second?
Yes, truly, 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 very proud. Lauren Trail and I, who are the two people who do the Backpack to Go program. A couple of years ago, the Penn Township Police said that they wanted to do something to help that program and the kids in our community. So we got together with them and we do a Stuff a Truck. Well, this year, the Penn Township Police Department had their truck and it was completely filled. They were overwhelmed. They could not believe how the community came out and filled that truck. And I hope you have an opportunity to go over into room 102. So Lauren Trail and Susie Perrin and the Penn Township Police, they all came over on Friday while we were here. We were also, it was a Backpack to Go box pickup day, so we had everything going on here with this. So the room is all set up, organized. They did an amazing job of organizing the toys. And on tomorrow evening and Wednesday evening, with the direction of Lauren Trail, the families will be coming in and they will have the opportunity to select toys for their, the younger children. One of the great things we started this year, we started literally like an angel tree thing. We, the high school kids and the middle school kids, there's not a lot of things for the families to choose from of the toys. So we put it out to our staff members. We asked the kids who were on the Backpack program some things that they might like and every wish was filled by our Penn Trafford staff. They filled every single wish and those kids are going to have an amazing Christmas because we are so blessed by the support of Penn Trafford and our staff. So this is going to be a wonderful, wonderful thing. I mean, it's changed because we can't do some of the wrapping in-person things, but people are still going to get an opportunity because of this community, the Penn Trafford community and their support of this program. So I can't thank the community enough for stepping up and helping the Penn Township Police Department.
And board members, that room is right across the hall where we met previously, so is it open right now?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so on your way out, just peek your head in there and see what it looks like. Thank you, Lisa, Lauren, Susie, and the Police Department for doing that, it's great.
You mentioned a food concern. I don't even know what's happening. There's kids that are getting food, but when they're remote, they're not in the building. So what's happening with our food program?
So Airmark has done a great thing. They have done a sign-up where people who are in need of food can register with Airmark and then they have a pickup at the back end of where they, where they, in the circle of athletics. And you can pick up food for the week, but you have to register with Airmark. We also have our food, our Backpack to Go program that we're still doing. We had a great thing by a bunch of young men, and we're going to put it in the newspaper. Some boys who are soccer players and best buddies, they went in the community and collected money and bought blankets for every single member, student that's in the Backpack program. And as they came and picked up boxes, we gave them their blankets and they were just so excited that someone would do that for them. And these are, these are boys in the middle school and high school that went out and collected for this. So there's, if you need, I mean this sincerely, if you know of people who need help, please have them reach out to Lauren Trail and I. We are more than happy to help people who, especially if they're in trouble and need some food, we can help them to get it, so.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, thank you all for everything, truly.
Thanks, Lisa.
Lisa, one other quick comment. I'm sure you would let us know, but please let Dr. Harris or Ms. Engle know if you need any additional resources to fight this or deal with the COVID-19 situation in our buildings.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. I will tell you, Dr. Harris and Mr. Engle, we are having issues of some we need substitute nurses. We need people that are out in the community who are registered nurses and want to come work in an amazing school district subbing. We don't have enough to allow me to have someone with me every day. So Dr. Harris and Mr. Engle got me Jackie Ritchie as a nurse secretary to help me. So today was her first day, and she answered phones for me and helped me with the kids, and it was great. So I appreciate them allowing me.
If anybody wants to be a substitute nurse, please get ahold of us.
Yes, yes, please, please get ahold of us if you want to be a sub.
We mainly need substitute nurses.
Say, I'm sorry? You must be a registered nurse to to work in in the school district as one of our building nurses. But we are always I was one of those nurses who had no idea that you needed school nurses. And I was sitting in a parent advisory meeting as a as a PTO member, and Dr. Harris called me out and said, well, you're a nurse, why aren't you one of our nurses? And that's how I started subbing in the district. So so if there's any nurses out there who want to come work for a great school district, please get in contact with us.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I appreciate Lisa, and I appreciate Scott. And between Scott, myself, and Lisa, we got the COVID, everything we do with the Health and Safety Plan, everything we do as far as the technology, all the things covered. And I do think I do appreciate all the help and do I receive from both Lisa and Scott. So thank you. Number a couple other items before we get to the meeting. We do have the flexible instructional days, and this was something that was out last year, and we did it this year. So when we do have snow closures, I know this year it's kind of a little bit different because we're used to being in remote learning. We do have like five instructional days we can use throughout the school year, and we kind of talked about it prior. But I just want to remind parents now that it's already getting we've already had a Tuesday. There was a pretty much of a snowstorm and not severe, but it's already brought to our attention that it could be common. So there are days built into the calendar that if we do have school closures due to snow or ice, we can use a flexible instructional day. So on those days, we would report that if school was closed, students would be actually online during those times. So we do have five of those as well to use. And while I'm on that subject, this kind of happened last week when we were off. We do have some charter schools and non-public schools that still are in attendance. So if we were off completely, say that our whole district was remote, I might still have to call a delay to notify the buses and the people who are out there. So if you ever see like a delay when we're already remote, that's the reason why. I'm notifying the other charter schools because we still I still maintain the transportation for them. Program of studies, I was very pleased during everything we're doing this year. We still have some revisions, and you're going to be approving the updated studies change. We did add a new course, Child Development 2, is an honors level. It's the prerequisites are 85% in child development. But the nice thing about this, not only is it an honor, you also get college credit through West Horn County Community College. In addition, and that's actually Mrs. Kukero, she actually came up with it, and she's doing a great job with the program, so I'm very proud of everything that she does down there. And I also think the next course is Mrs. Sudashri. Sudashri, I can't say it with my mask on. It's for staff, 1,000 Applied Staff Methods. She has really grown this program, and she's done a phenomenal job. This is you basically have to take take college calculus first, and then you actually can take this course afterwards, and you get college credit through the University of Pittsburgh. So it's another course through Pitt that she's helping to implement this year, and I really appreciate all the hard work that she does as well. Other revisions we're making, and we're currently working right now to give college credit to the following classes. Encore, Ovation, that's through Mr. Fox and the chorus. Algebra II, it's, excuse me, is available for college credit only during the summer, and that depends on staffing. Precalculus Honors, Preschool III, Business Law, Weightlifting, Child Development II, Organic Chemistry, Ceramics III. So it gives us another total 10 more courses that you can take to receive college credit before you leave the high school. And as I always tell people, it really makes a huge difference with the amount of college credits you can take during the high school when you go into the college, because you're that much more advanced when you start, and you have that many credits under your belt. I know Tony, I always talk about her kids, we were one of the first ones to take them years ago, when we only had maybe three or four courses at that time.
Yeah, I think it was a semester worth.
Semester worth. So it's really grown, so there's a lot of opportunities going to be on the plate for next year. And I would encourage many students to, you know, take if you're going to take them, why not pay the college credit because you do it at such a reduced offering? But that's on your agenda for tonight to approve. And finally, we're doing the Students of the Month, but we can't have them come. So we, Colleen Cully, and she's on the hall, she's actually made an outstanding website for the Students of the Month. And Jim Matarazzo, Mr. President, is going to read to describe the Students of the Month.
It's one of our, as far as the board honoring Students of the Month, has been doing for about 10 years. Students are selected by their school principals for being exceptional in so many different ways, whether for earning top grades, showing leadership, exhibiting kindness, or for some other reason. The school board enjoys meeting and shaking hands or giving an elbow with the selected students at the monthly board meetings. It's so disappointing not to have them here, to be honest with you, because we have such fantastic kids, as Mrs. Popovich was mentioning. So this would be some examples of a few of these kids. And I might add, they get a certificate, they'll get their picture taken somewhere, and they just need to be honored. At the high school, Elena Castillo is a junior at Penn Trafford High School and has done so much to touch the lives of others without even knowing it. According to their principal, Mr. Tony Aquilio, you will never see a student as happy as Elena, Elena, I'm sorry, Elena, come to school each and every day. Elena works in the PTH Coffee Shop, which allows her to spread her happiness to everyone she encounters. This year, social distancing, wearing masks, and not seeing your friends each day, they've contributed to making students feel a little more isolated. But Elena's positive outlook and cheer is seen and heard right away as she delivers coffee and tea to students and staff. Said Mr. Aquilio, during the difficult times of pandemic, Elena and her awesome attitude made it an easy decision on being naming her the Student of the Month for the high school. So congratulations to Elena Castillo. An eighth grader at Trafford Middle School, Zachary Lovis, he's a straight A student who is praised by many teachers for his kindness, enthusiasm, and leadership. One of Zach's teachers commented Zach is a teacher's ideal student. He's polite, engaged, hardworking, enthusiastic, and always on task. Another student remarked Zach's always ready with a good morning or have a nice day wish, even this year. He seems to enjoy learning and life and always maintains a positive attitude and demeanor. Mr. Roger Sullivan, the school principal, acknowledged Zach's academic excellence, his strong leadership qualities, and the many positive character traits that made Zach his selection for Student of the Month. So congratulations, Zach. Then a second grader, student at Level Green Elementary, Hannah Callaher. Hannah is a standout student and one you wouldn't easily forget after meeting and speaking with her. Friendly face for everyone in the building. She can carry on a meaningful conversation with ease, which is rare for a child of her age. She's bright, thoughtful, polite, and very mature. Mr. Denapoli, Hannah's principal, says she never forgets to end a conversation with have a nice day. It's like she's looking for a way to brighten your day. We're lucky to have Hannah at Level Green Elementary. And our last student, Kalen Mellon, is a fifth grade student at Trafford Elementary. By all accounts, Kalen is a wonderful young lady. She was Trafford Elementary's Worthy Warrior winner for kindness and her compassion. Work ethic and positive attitude make her an asset to both the school and the Trafford community. Mr. Denapoli, the principal, says of Kalen, she is a positive role model for all. Her teachers know that she will be successful no matter what she chooses to do in the future. We're happy to have Kalen at Trafford Elementary. So those are our Students of the Month. Look forward to seeing them someday soon.
Absolutely. And that's all I have for information.
All right. Thank you very much.
I think that's the record.
Well, I'm looking at the time. It might be a record. This is a point where we have recognition of visitors, to which we don't recognize anyone here, so we'll just move on down. Going to go to old business, and I might add, visitors, you're welcome. People are welcome to come in and address the board. You call in, you sign up, and you're always welcome. Under the old business, there's no items under old business. We had an executive session, which was before this meeting. The school board, these people here that volunteer their time, we meet around 5:15, and we discuss personnel issues and discuss other things, a lot of good things, right? And our solicitor is there to make sure we don't say anything outside.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to announce that the board convened for an executive session on November 16 to discuss personnel and collective bargaining matters. And the board also convened for an executive session tonight at 5:30 to discuss personnel negotiations, and the board received information on the required updates to the mitigation and mask order in Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. From there, we move on to what's called a consent agenda motion. And just to help people understand this, action items considered routine and or which have been previously discussed by the board can be enacted under one motion unless removed by separate action upon board members. So there's things that we've discussed that's going to be, is there anybody have any questions, comments? No, and it's it becomes a procedural, and it takes time. So we're trying to alleviate that by having what's called a consent agenda. So does the board wish to remove any items from the consent agenda?
I think with some changes to.
Oh. Dr. Harris?
That is true. We did change some names on the committee. Do you want me to just read them aloud, Christina, to make?
Okay.
And then we're just note that the new changes reflect for athletics and extracurricular, Scott Koschko will go from assistant chairperson to chairperson, and Tony Issing will go from chairperson to assistant chairperson of the Athletics and Extracurricular Committee. And then for employee relations, negotiations, transportation, Scott Koschko will go from chairperson to assistant chairperson, and Tony Issing will go to chairperson of that committee. Basically, they are changing their roles on athletic and extracurricular, as well as employee relations, negotiations, and transportation. In addition, Phil Kachasik and Rich Nemick, they're going to actually switch their committees they chair. Phil Kachasik will no longer be the chairperson of Budget and Finance, and he will take over Food Service. And Rich Nemick will no longer take be the chairperson of Food Service, he will take over Budget and Finance, according to the changes on those 2021 board committee assignments.
I'm not sure if we have to make a, we need a motion on that or if we just move forward?
I think it was on your it was on your list to approve, but since we made some changes to the committee, we just need to make sure we know what we're voting on.
Okay. So if we'd agreed to vote on the changes to the committee, and again, I mentioned this earlier, all everybody here is a president or chairperson of a committee. They're doing more than just sitting in on one meeting. So those changes now, if there are amenable questions being called for on the changes being made on the, I'm sorry, the committee personnel.
So moved.
So have a motion on that?
So moved.
So moved and seconded?
Second.
Got a second and a third? So all, I'm sorry, so it's been accepted that we're looking at making the changes on the school committee personnel. If all of if that's acceptable, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Let us move forward. All right. Let's see, I think we move then from the from there, because they're all part of the consent agenda. See the time we're saving? I'm just going through pages now. Hope I'm doing this right.
You can leave.
Pardon me? Uh-oh.
You got a consent agenda.
Oh, I thought we did. We didn't vote on the consent agenda items.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Then may I may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Yes.
All right.
You have a motion by Mr. Patrissi?
Second.
Okay, all those approve of the changes, or I should say, under the consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. All right, now we can move forward. Trying to think how we're going to move forward now, since we got all that done. I think, if I'm not mistaken, we've got the buildings and grounds, am I right? Pardon me? And I want to thank Colleen, our she actually put numbers on the pages for me. Thank you. So I think. Page 12. Page 12. Excellent. So we scoop over to page 12, and buildings and ground and safety. Mr. Dallas Leonard is not here today, but Mr. Nemick, I think you're.
Yep.
Assistant on that, so I can turn it over to you, please.
Okay, move to approve the Penn Trafford School District's revised 2020-2021 Health and Safety Plan. A copy of the plan will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
The motion's been made and seconded.
Question.
And question?
Just to clarify, the changes to the Health and Safety Plan are incorporating a number of the things that we discussed here earlier, such as the quarantine, the travel, the face covering mandate, things of that nature, have all been incorporated into the new Health and Safety Plan. So any adjustments will be reflected in there, and this will be posted on our website tomorrow for everybody's review.
Excellent. Great. So we've been moved and seconded to approve the Penn Trafford School District's revised 2021 Health and Safety Plan. Copy of the plan will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting. There'll be a roll call vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion passed.
I would also like to move to authorize the superintendent and board president to submit attestation ensuring implementation of mitigation efforts, forms identifying the district's operational model.
And remember, these are forms we actually, so this is a kind of, we already had it submitted by the, I think it was the 30th, and we already submitted it, but we just are making this as formality tonight.
Are they the board ratified?
Yeah.
So hopefully, we're ready to ratify. It's been moved to authorize the superintendent and board president to submit the attestation ensuring implementation of mitigation efforts, forms that identify the district's operational model. Been moved, seconded, Mr. Leonard?
Right.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and opposed? Good, we move forward.
That's all I have on that.
Thank you, Mr. Nemick. And I think, okay, approved, pardon me? We're going to approve the, oh, okay, Mrs. Issing. Or Dr. Kosh, that's our.
Okay, under employees, raised, and transportation, our understanding with the Penn Trafford Educational. Two addresses, remote.
His honor for instruction and planning.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got it. Second, is there any questions about this?
Questions.
Okay, it's open for questions. Any questions, Mrs. Issing, on that? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Be a roll call vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Patrissi?
Okay, move to approve Penn Chapel High School Program of Studies for 2021 and 2022 as presented to the board. Second.
Question? Any questions? Questions made? Okay, it's we have a motion to approve the Penn Trafford School Program of Studies as presented to the board. Roll call vote on this one. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We move forward.
I want to thank you for approving those. There are so many good courses, and definitely want to thank the high school principal, principals as well as my high school staff for making it possible. We couldn't have all those opportunities without my teachers, and so we're doing it. So thank you.
I like to say, I get excited when I see what all that we offer. I think parents need to take a look sometimes when kids say, oh, there's I'm not interested in anything. There's nothing I know, it's boring. Take a look at some of these subjects that we provide. It's amazing, not only for college credit, but just regular in-class. So I'd encourage people, take a look at those offerings. Okay, we move down to Solicitor's Report.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You know what, I'm going to say something. I'm an old-fashioned guy. Chairman of the board sounds better than Mr. President to me. And I, believe it or not, I haven't had a forum in here from the school board, I can I can actually use that term, chairman. So call me either chairman or president. I don't feel I'm elected to anything, so whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. This gentleman here, you remind me doing that.
I have no report, but I would just like to extend on behalf of Melo Brungo Melo and certainly myself, a healthy and safe holiday to all of you.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone have anything else to say before we adjourn?
Yeah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and.
It's over.
I get to do this for the first time. We're going to adjourn at 8:24 PM.